Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the October 9th meeting of the Bellingham City Council. I have to call this meeting to order and remind everyone that this is Coast Salish Day here in Bellingham, Washington. There are two announcements I'd like to make. The first one is that next month, or next meeting, October 23rd, on Monday here in the City Council chambers, there will be a public hearing for consideration of a request to adopt an institutional master plan for Watford Community College. Also, on Monday, October 23rd, here in the City Council chambers, there'll be a public hearing on the city of Bellingham's 2018 revenue forecast, including property taxes, an annual thing we do every year with regard to the property tax, our revenue and our budget. Would you please now join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Gabriel Barker?
Here.
Dan Hamill?
Here.
Jane Knudsen?
Here.
Michael Liloquist?
Here.
Roxanne Murphy?
Here.
Pinky Vargas?
Here.
Terry Bornerman?
Here.
Okay, thank you. The first thing we do is hold any public hearings. We have one of those today, and then we'll go into a public comment period. For the public hearing, unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask your indulgence. Our overhead projectors are not working. We're going to do all this with hand puppets or signs or something because we, and unfortunately, it has to do with a utility easement, which normally we'll show you on a map. We'll try to describe that as best we can in words. It's a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing relinquishment of a surplus utility easement, which is located within the vacated Taylor Avenue between the east street line of 10th Street and the west street line of 29th Street. So this is a portion of right-of-way, which has already been vacated by the city, but there apparently is still a utility easement. Ted, shall I, I don't know why you're over there.
Yeah, sorry about that. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. This is something that the council has become familiar with. For the community that may not be familiar with it, historically, there were times where the city vacated the right-of-way for whatever reason. At that time, the city tended to retain utility easements, even if there were not utilities in the right-of-way at that time, just in case in the future there was the need to use the right-of-ways for installation of water, sewer, stormwater, other city-owned utilities. What we're seeing now is as folks go to develop property that are encumbered with those easements, they are requesting that the city relinquish the easement, so in essence, remove the encumbrance from their property so that they could develop it. The city goes through a process to determine whether or not the easement is, in fact, surplus to our needs. So we look at our water, sewer, stormwater, see whether or not we need that easement for future development. If we don't, the city goes through the process, the staff determines it to be surplus to our needs, the code requires us to have a public hearing on it, come to the city council. We treat it somewhat as a property, so the city council has to take action on it, confirming staff recommendation or saying, no, we don't agree with that. So that's why we're here today. We normally put up a map so people could see, but I will say that staff has gone through the process, determined that the utility easement is, in fact, surplus to our needs, and that's both Public Works, Planning, Parks Department, everybody does take a look at that, the legal department. So we're here today to have the public hearing. And without the map, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
First, some of the documents refer to a partial relinquishment?
Partial relinquishment. There are conditions, and I'm sorry, pull this up at times, requirements that if there are other easements or other users of the easement, that an easement is negotiated with that party, would be a private utility company, not the city, but telecom or someone that would need to get an easement between themselves and the property owner. The city's not part of that process.
So if I can try to describe this, if you're leaving the university and headed towards Happy Valley and you head on 21st, there's kind of a steep road that kind of goes up and joins another street, so I guess it's going up from 21st to 20th, and that's a segment of Taylor Avenue. Is that what we're talking about, Ted?
That's correct.
Okay. Council members, any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, can we see who's anyone signed up? Okay, no one has signed up for the public hearing. However, I will go ahead and open the public hearing if anyone would like to come forward and provide comment or give feedback to the city council on this utility easement. Okay, I'm seeing no one coming forward. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Move approval.
Second.
We have motion before us to approve the, let me get the words right, to authorize relinquishment of a surplus utility easement located within the vacated Taylor Avenue between the east street line of 10th Street and the west street line of 29th Street. Because these utility easements come to us at no cost, we also relinquish them at no cost, so that we know money involved in this. All those in favor of the relinquish, passing the resolution to authorize relinquishment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll now go on to our 15-minute public comment period. Terry, can you see if people are signed up for that? So during our 15-minute public comment period, we open up the floor to people. You will have three minutes each, if you're signed up, in order to speak to the city council as a whole about something on your mind or you think is of citywide interest. A few ground rules. Please address the city councils as a whole. If you ask us any questions, we're going to treat them as rhetorical. We don't respond back and forth. It's not a conversation. We're just going to listen to what you have to say. Also, no applause and no boos, no cheering or, you know, disagreement. If someone has an opinion, just let them express it quietly. It'll be a safer place for people to express things, whether they're popular or unpopular. I think the only other rule I want to say, because we're getting close to election time, is no election-related commentary, please. Okay, we have kind of a foolish list today. Janet Marino, you were signed up first, followed by Chris Diley, and then Giovani Orecchio. Giovanna Orecchio.
Hey, everybody. My name is Janet Marino, and I live at 2401 Colson Street in the Fountain District, and I'm a homeowner there. I'm here tonight to speak on three sort of related issues: ADUs and density in single-family neighborhoods, my appreciation for the low-income housing levy, and my absolute support that we pass some form of ordinance that takes source-of-income discrimination into consideration for housing, rental housing in the city of Bellingham. A lot of you know me personally, and if you do, you might know that I have opened my home up in the last year and a half to a total over that course of time of four individuals who would be classified as homeless. And in that time, three of these individuals would be probably classified as medically fragile and will probably be relying on social security as their primary source of income for the rest of their lives. And I can't emphasize enough what a challenge it has been to find stable, safe housing for them in that time with the vacancy rate and the current income-to-expense ratio that's required for most housing in Bellingham. I've had to pull out all my stops from when I worked in housing, and I don't work in housing anymore, but I've pulled down a lot of favors to make that work. And they've experienced both implicit and explicit bias in the housing rental process, and I kind of think it's criminal. So if they're, if it's within your power to pass an ordinance that allows, that prevents source-of-income discrimination, I really want to urge you to do that, because I've seen it firsthand with people that I know and care about. And we know that the housing stock that's low-income is already challenging enough in Bellingham. I live in a neighborhood where ADUs are already permissible. I chose to live in that neighborhood because I wanted the urban density. I wanted to be able to walk everywhere. I'm not scared of having neighbors nearby. I'm comfortable with that. In the last year, I've received three notifications for the permitting process for ADUs that are going to be adjacent to my alley. Yes, in my backyard, if I can say it like that. I don't have a problem with it. I was fortunate enough to be able to buy my house before the market prices went bonkers. None of my friends can afford to live in my neighborhood. So the idea of maybe one of them being able to rent a little place in my neighborhood sounds fantastic, quite frankly. So to summarize, yes to source-of-income discrimination, ending that by ordinance, and let's let it have some teeth, if that's possible. Yes to a renewed low-income housing levy, and all of you who can and are able to participate in that process, I encourage you to do that, because I am really proud of that. And yes, in my backyard, to ADUs. Thanks.
Thanks, Shannon. I forgot to mention, we'll have a timer going, but when you hear the bell, that means you still have 30 seconds left. So it'll give you time to wrap up. And just let the council know, I do see about two and a half pages, so if there's no problem, okay, going for it. Chris, go ahead, and then Giovanna Orecchio, followed by Hill Cummings.
Hi, yeah, my name is Chris Diley. This is to clarify the minutes from July 10th of 2017. They've recently become available online. It states that Chris Diley corrected his story at the last meeting where he described the details about black bears versus grizzly bears. I know the minutes have already been approved, so I don't expect them to be corrected, but I did want to clarify that I did not correct my story, but what I did was I corrected information that I was mistakenly, that I mistakenly gave at the meeting before about the little girl, the 10-year-old girl up in East Vancouver, BC. She was attacked by a black bear, not by a grizzly bear. So I corrected that, but that had nothing to do with my story of being attacked by a grizzly in Alaska in 1996. I wanted to clarify that because it's important, because I've been smeared ever since going online for the long-distance hiking forums, since I used to be a long-distance hiker back when I was healthy. I went on and I was letting people know, you know, that the bear spray wasn't enough when we were attacked up in Alaska. And what they responded, the pro-bear-spray author responded by posting a very inflammatory article about me online on that trail forum, making it look like I had changed my story, you know, that I was scared, that I had been scared during the attack, and I changed the story to make myself look better. I took that to a lawyer, and he said, that's definitely defamation. He said, that's, you know, that's, it was wrong. And so I alerted him online, and he took it down immediately, because he knew it was wrong. Anyhow, my point is, I just wanted to be clear, I've never changed my story, you know, that we were attacked September 15th, 1996, and fortunately, I acted correctly in the attack. And for somebody like me, that's a timid, soft-spoken person, to act well in a bear attack, I'm actually very proud of that. You know, even though I attributed it to just adrenaline and being on autopilot, you know, I just happened to act, you know, correctly in the attack. I'm actually proud of that. So for them to smear me, and in that article and in the Seattle Times, when they quoted me, "With bears, should you spray pepper or bullets?" by Florentino Devia in the Seattle Times, that was October 9th, 1999. Devia made me look very bad, like I was a scared person in the article. And so that's been part of the ad hominem, is to make people that are warning that bear spray is not enough for a bear attack, to make us look like we're afraid. And that's not the case at all. I mean, I've been hiking, and that's just simply not the case. And so I think when you follow this issue, you see that it's, that the, that their position lacks substance, so they resort to ad hominem in this manner to make it look like it's an issue of fear when it isn't. Because I've been hiking since then, and I've been among bears, and I did just fine with them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Giovanna Orecchio's next, followed by Hill Cummings, then Paul Luthold.
Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. It's very impressive. My name's Giovanna Orecchio, and I've lived here in Bellingham for almost three years now, and I love it. I love that I'm able to work and live and study and make a home here, and I want nothing more than my other neighbors to be able to do the same. So I'd like to speak in favor of an income discrimination ordinance today. Social assistance, federal social assistance like Section 8 is very necessary, and it's an added burden to folks who desperately need a roof over their heads when they face discrimination, simply trying to redeem their voucher. And I urge you to pass a housing discrimination ordinance, income discrimination ordinance, that does have some oomph behind it, because fundamentally, what we desire for ourselves, we should wish for all. And I think that's where good public policy comes from. So, thank you.
Thank you, Giovanna. Hill Cummings is next, followed by Paul Luthold, then Greg Winter.
My name is Hill Cummings. I live at 1517 Texas Street, number 24. And since we have overheads, I'm going to take the chance to, I want to speak about the housing discrimination issue. I just came back, I just, I just came back from a summit. We did a residential project, and some of you have been to meetings. We just had a summit with 13 different cities, and it's interesting how I've talked to people from Spokane and people from Vancouver, and people are, there's a lot of cities that are about the same process, the place in the process that we are. And last year, for the Low Income Housing Alliance, we tried to get the legislature to deal with this. This year, not last year, but now we have to do it this year. So I don't want to get political though, but I just want to say that we, as residents, you know, we have a way to do stuff as a city, and if enough cities in our state do stuff like this, the legislature has to follow. I know, maybe she has some ideas. But, and I just wanted to say that, that one of the biggest takeaways that I had from our, from our summit, talking about this, and I talked to, I'm on a lot of committees, I've been on committees of a lot of people doing stuff, but I just wanted to say that we know the, we talk about the problems. We've got a pretty good job, I think, of quantifying and knowing what's going on. And it's time to focus on solutions.
Thank you, Hill. I do want to clarify, when I say, please don't speak to elections or candidates, you can get as political as you want. It's just the election issue.
Well, I cannot represent wrath, and I could just be me.
Okay, just want to clarify that. Paul, you're up next, followed by Greg Winter, then John Harmon.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Luthold. I live at 2200 West Cot Street in Bellingham, and I serve as the president of the Lake Patton Senior Men's Club. When the golf course opened in 1971, it's been successful for 46 years and averages approximately 30,000 rounds a year. That's almost 2 million people that have played rounds of golf at Lake Patton. The golf course is a true enterprise fund. At least for the last few decades, it's never received any subsidy from the city of Bellingham. Whatever goes in there is paid by the golfers. Whatever comes out is the golf, golf club-generated revenue. In addition to that, $35,000 annually is taken out of that in the form of a BNO tax that subsidizes youth sports. So there's a direct subsidy, even if you don't play golf there, you still have a direct subsidy if you have children that are involved in youth recreation programs. In addition to that, Seum and Bellingham High School use that as their home golf course, and they play at extremely reduced rates, and all the teams that play against them there play for free. They also have a really great Learn to Golf program, and they have dozens of fundraisers in the form of tournaments for various worthwhile organizations citywide. The golf course operates in a very small margin. About $1.2 million a year comes in, about $1.1 million goes out. Because of this small margin, this last year, golf has been relatively flat. And what we need now is probably another Tiger Woods effect, so more people play golf. In addition to that, the weak Canadian dollar did not permit more Canadians to come down and invite them down to play at our golf course. The bad weather this last year, in which Mel and his Lake Patton LLC was closed for 80 days, had a negative combination, made a negative combination, combination so that Lake Patton Golf Course chose not to renew this year. I'm very pleased that the Park and Recreation Department with Leslie has done a good job of looking at an additional, a new Leslie, well, actually, a new manager called Premier Golf, and I believe that they'll do a really good job. Timing of this is of the essence. There's delayed fall maintenance, the transition of hiring employees, purchasing equipment, cleaning the place up, and getting the golf course ready needs to be done within the next two months. That's a very, very small margin of time. The consequences of not getting this done means that there'll be about $100,000 to $150,000 a year increase, which will be passed on directly to the golfers, to the tune of about $2 to $3 per round. Now, that may not sound like a lot of money, but that's over 10% increase for most of us seniors. Otherwise, the city will have to do a subsidy of that golf course at some time in the future. And lastly, there's a, there's a tremendous need for deferred maintenance right now at the golf course, and we're hopeful that we can get some of those projects done. So I'm asking that you grant an exemption under the living wage for the Lake Patton Golf Course.
Thank you, Paul. Greg, you're up next, followed by John Harmon, and then Rain Forever.
Thank you. I want to thank council, the mayor, city staff, for, you know, really wrestling with these very challenging issues related to the lack of housing opportunities for people who are really struggling with that issue, especially people with disabilities, seniors, veterans, that are, many of whom are living on extremely limited fixed incomes. So as you know, Opportunity Council partners with the city, with Waccah County Health Department, with the Bellingham Housing Authority, State Department of Commerce, the VA, and lots of other organizations, including private donations to help people with housing stability. And I know that you know it's really important that for people living on fixed income, having this housing assistance is absolutely essential to obtaining housing stability. And a couple of months ago, you heard a lot from me on this issue, so I'm not going to repeat that. I thought instead I would share some insights from a colleague of mine in the city of Vancouver, Washington, where the, where the city council there and now the city has implemented for about two years a source-of-income discrimination policy. And so I asked my friend Andy, I said, how's it going, two years later? And here's what Andy said. Before the ordinance was in place, there were a lot of landlords and property managers that had a blanket policy against any rental assistance. Now that everyone has to accept applications, it has opened up a few new opportunities. First, there are people who utilize rental assistance who are able to pass the screening criteria and now have access to more apartments. And that's absolutely critical to understand, that if the door is closed just because you have this assistance, there's, there's not even a chance. Second, there are people who utilize rental assistance that are unable to pass the screening criteria, but with our help, the help of his agency, which is very much like Opportunity Council, but with our help, those applicants are able to overcome the denial by appealing and discussing the services that they'll be provided to help them become stable renters. And finally, it's opened up more dialogue in general about how property managers and rental assistance programs can work together. So they've seen a really positive effect from this ordinance in the city of Vancouver. And I've already shared with city staff and some council members contact information for people in Vancouver, and I'm happy to help if that's useful in the future as well. So thank you for working on this issue. It's super important, as you know.
Thank you, Greg. John Harmon is next, followed by Rain Forever, and then Stephen Gockley.
Yes, I'm John Harmon. I'm the director of the Bellingham and Waccah County Housing Authorities. And first of all, I do want to thank all the landlords who have participated in our Section 8 program, because we've had quite a few, and it never would have been a success without them. We have 1,781 voucher holders, and they're distributed all over Bellingham and all over Waccah County, actually. And most landlords who participated in the program have found it to be very valuable. They're guaranteed the biggest chunk of their rent, and we provide free inspection services for them, which are mainly oriented toward health and safety. They're not picky inspections, they're, you know, life-saving inspections. Most landlords want to know about that. And so for those landlords, we say thank you. But our participants are finding it harder and harder to find units now. Last year, our success rate of people we issue vouchers to who found a place was 58%. This year, it's running 55%. And that trend has been going down for several years. Part of it's rent increases we've seen in this incredibly tight market we have in Bellingham, and some of it is landlords getting pickier about who they rent to. And so I am speaking very much in favor of the income discrimination ordinance. I think honest landlords have nothing to fear from it. They use legitimate criteria for screening tenants. And I think most landlords would be surprised at how well the Section 8 program would work for them if they gave it a try. And there are many of them out there that could verify that. Right now, we have 140 people who are out searching for housing. Some of them came from our lottery that was taken two years ago, and the demand is such for Section 8 housing, that we've had to resort to a lottery to allocate the scarce resources that we have, and to make it fair, as fair as we can, to everybody. Of those 140 people, 63 will be unsuccessful. We already know that, and it's a sad thing to contemplate, because they've waited, at this point, for two years to have a shot at finding a place with their voucher. And the odds are really against them, or they're 50/50, but those are still aren't very good odds after you've been waiting for two years. And these were the first people, or some of the last people, I should say, who were chosen by the lottery, and so that's why their turn has come up finally. So I'm hoping we can get an ordinance like this passed, because I think it would do the community a great deal of good. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Up next is Rain Forever, followed by Stephen Gockley and Betsy Pernato. Where's Rain, Rain here? So Rain, are you still here? Okay, we're going to go ahead and go on to Stephen Gockley, if you'd come forward, please, followed by Betsy Pernato, and then Emily O'Connor.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor Linville, my name is Stephen Gockley. I am a 29-year homeowner in Leonard Street's neighborhood, an area we chose for the economic diversity that is slowly ebbing out of even that area. Last year, I retired after 28 years as a civil legal aid attorney, representing low-income people, often in housing matters. Had the pleasure in that time of both collaborating closely with John and his staff at the Housing Authority, as well as getting into a couple tiffs together, which were all constructively resolved. And like John's comment in the Herald article of Sunday, I would echo, I have never in that time seen the rental situation, the affordability situation, as bad as we have it the last year or so, getting worse by the day. In retirement, I have the privilege of also serving on the five-county North Sound Accountable Community of Health, charged by the state in improving the health of individuals and the community as a whole. I also serve on the county's Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. In each of those venues, looking at critical public policy issues, the lack of affordable housing and the lack of access to whatever affordable housing we have is a theme that runs through every conversation that those bodies, trying to make important improvements in our county environment, have to confront. I will be very brief. Low-income people that I have represented have many, many barriers in terms of screening for affordable housing. It simply does not make sense to have a source-of-income, out-of-the-box, blanket kind of barrier for them to overcome. They will need to meet plenty of tests that can protect the interests of landlords without stopping their application at the very front end. I would simply urge you as strongly as I can to give active consideration to the most robust prohibition against source-of-income discrimination that you can. My, my limited understanding at this point is that the Vancouver ordinance model is, is perhaps the most balanced and protective available. I'd encourage you to take a very close look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Betsy Pernato, you are up next, followed by Emily O'Connor, and then Adrian Solenberger.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Betsy Pernato. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood, and I'm here to support an ordinance banning income-source discrimination against renters. In June, the Bellingham Herald reported that Bellingham is one of the least affordable cities in the country for rent. With an apartment vacancy rate of essentially zero, there is no doubt we have a housing crisis. I feel it is morally repugnant that landlords have taken advantage of this housing crisis by making the poor pay the brunt of the crisis by discriminating against individuals with housing vouchers. Housing is a human right. I encourage you to pass the income-source discrimination ban, and then to consider additional measures. How about banning rent increases that exceed the rate of inflation? Thank you.
Thank you. Up next will be Emily O'Connor, followed by Adrian Solenberger, and then Brian Estes.
Hi, everybody. So I'll just take a minute. My name is Emily O'Connor. I am the executive director of- I am the Executive Director of Litia Place, but most importantly, I'm a 17-year resident of Bellingham. And when I moved here 17 years ago, as you all know, the housing climate was very different. Things were much more affordable, and we weren't in the crisis that we're in today. What's been increasingly happening is that we've become more gentrified and more segregated, which is a trend that really, really concerns me as a member of this community. I don't want to live in a community that is economically one-dimensional. I think that hurts all of us. Economic inequality and poverty also disproportionately impact our communities of color, which means when we have ordinances or lack of ordinances that allow for source of income discrimination, that further disadvantages and disproportionately impacts our communities of color, which I think we need to remember. I was listening to Freakonomics Radio this Sunday, and they had a very interesting piece on a new study about what happens to children who grow up in economically diverse neighborhoods versus highly segregated neighborhoods. And the children who were able to grow up in neighborhoods that had high levels of economic diversity had a 30% better chance of climbing upward economic mobility. 30%. I thought that was pretty cool. Extra motivation. I know I benefit, my children benefit, from growing up in a diverse community, and we know that children who are also coming from poverty greatly benefit from growing up in a diverse community. This ordinance is something that might be sort of a small step, it might be a little bit symbolic as well, but it represents my values, and I really believe that it represents the large majority of this population's values. And so, I just wanted to urge you and applaud you for your efforts in going forward with the source of income discrimination ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Up next is Adrian Solenberger, followed by Brian Estes, and then Anna Kemper.
Good evening. I'm Adrian Solenberger, the landlord liaison with the Opportunity Council. I'm also a community landlord for five years and resident of Wathcom County for 16, and a direct service provider for 15 of those years, working in housing specifically for eight. I have had the privilege of serving our homeless youth, our veterans, our low-income families, and our severely disabled in many capacities. Of those 140 people searching for Section 8 housing right now, I'm going to receive about phone calls from about 75% of them, asking for my assistance in finding housing. It's exhausting. We have a small vacancy rate, we have a shortage of affordable housing. And I think luckily, I came enough, late enough in the game to not have reiterated anything, but discrimination of any kind is not okay. And marketing discrimination is not okay. And I think that's what this boils down to. There are enough barriers when you face poverty that being told that you can't be housed somewhere because of where your income comes from should not be something that is added to it. So, I encourage you, to the very least, support ordinance to prevent income discrimination in our housing sector.
Thank you, Adrian. Brian Estes, you are next, then Anna Kemper, followed by Paul Moore.
Hi, I'm Brian Estes, a real estate broker and a cordada resident in the city of Bellingham. I'm here to talk about some of the planning committee issues that were raised earlier today. Land use defines our community. It defines the type of people and families who live here, where they can afford to live, and how they're able to move around the city. The city's housing survey this past summer revealed many Bellingham residents are cost-burdened or severely cost-burdened by housing costs. I want a Bellingham with land use policies that foster stable, affordable housing, which also allows greater transit access. I want a walkable and bike-friendly place, and one that is socially equitable. This requires land use policies citywide that sensibly promote greater urban density. Most areas of Bellingham's own single-family currently do not permit much-needed infill and increased housing density. The city of Bellingham should not let individual neighborhoods decide what type of community we want, nor determine who can or cannot afford to live in parts of our city. Our land use and zoning policies reflect our community values. They also reflect how we are addressing social, racial, and intergenerational components of equity. What kind of legacy does our current policy mean for lower and middle-income members of our community? How are they able to support themselves and their families with the current housing choices available? Some neighborhoods have downzoned, perhaps in the interest of preservation, but this has had a detrimental effect on closing off lower housing cost options in a number of neighborhoods, especially those close to the downtown core. I urge the city council to consider, we need equitable neighborhoods. Every neighborhood should allow for a diversity of housing types to support economically and culturally diverse communities. ADUs, backyard cottages, duplexes, and the six other housing types mentioned in the infill toolkit should be built in all neighborhoods. Economically diverse neighborhoods will improve education for all our kids in Bellingham and help close the opportunity gap, instead of having good and bad schools that concentrate wealth and poverty. Our community values the beauty of the outdoors and protecting our climate by building a variety of housing choices in existing neighborhoods. We can prevent urban sprawl, enhance walking and biking, and improve the efficiency of public transit. Some county council candidates talk of expanding Bellingham's UGA towards Ferndale to the north. Let's first infill our community to prevent further sprawl and increased traffic congestion. Finally, greater housing affordability means Bellingham's workers can live here and don't have to commute from Ferndale or Mount Vernon. These are reasonable and sensible solutions to our affordable housing crisis. Our children and future generations will thank you for taking these steps to address it.
Thank you, Brian. Up next is Anna Kemper, followed by Paul Moore, and then David Henkin.
Hi, my name is Anna Kemper. I'm currently the local issues liaison for the university, and I'm going to be echoing a lot of what folks have already said tonight. Three years ago, I moved to Bellingham to attend Western. I'm originally from Portland, but I'm really now happy to call Bellingham my home. I chose to go to Western originally for a few reasons, but the main one was the location. Bellingham is a beautiful city, and it has good values. I love being able to live in a town where I can walk to the downtown area, a grocery store, and beautiful green spaces in only a few minutes. The people here pride themselves on being fair and progressive. Bellingham is a welcoming city that can be a home for many people with many different backgrounds, and many of my fellow students choose Western for the same reason. The AS Board at Western voted last spring in favor of promoting housing policies that support low-income families and non-discriminatory housing policies. I'm here today because I want to urge the city council in passing a source of income discrimination ordinance in Bellingham. I want Bellingham to continue to represent the values we all pride ourselves on. The Bellingham Herald reported yesterday that the vacancy rate for homes and apartments for rent in Bellingham is at 0%. There's a shortness of supply, as well as discrimination by landlords who refuse Section 8 housing vouchers. Those who fall victim to these discriminations are disproportionately, as we know, people of color and people with disabilities. Furthermore, Bellingham's infill housing toolkit does not allow for middle-density homes, like folks have said before, such as cottages, duplexes, and townhouses that are in single-family zones. This is a problem, because as you all know, 70% of Bellingham qualifies as single-family zones, and this just adds to the shortness of supply of housing. So, as a community, I think we need to face this crisis together and end discriminatory housing practices and allow for these missing middle homes. It's unjust and unfair that landlords can refuse to rent houses to people based on their source of income, and we need to make housing available and affordable to all families in Bellingham. The housing crisis in Bellingham has been an important topic in the last few months as rents continue to rise and affordable housing becomes harder and harder to find. I want to thank the council for everything you all have done so far to remediate the problem, and I urge you to consider my comments and think about the values that we all share as a community as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Up next is Paul Moore, followed by David Henkin, and then Pearl Follett.
Thank you. My name is Paul Moore. For the 12 years that I've lived in Bellingham, I've lived at the Washington Square senior and disabled apartments. This housing problem didn't just pop up last month, or even in the last six months. A little over three years ago, I developed some allergies to some of the materials that were used in building the building I live in, in the mid-'60s, as well as some other items. My doctor said I needed to get out. Fortunately, although it took some time and some effort, Housing was able to get me a medical emergency housing choice Section 8 voucher. I looked everywhere I could. If it was on a bus line, I went to it, here in Bellingham and the periphery. And either the cost was too high, or they wouldn't take Section 8. We don't want your kind here. My kind? What is my kind? Is it because I have a Section 8 voucher? Is it because I'm disabled? I don't know. Maybe I'm a pariah. I don't know. But for whatever reason, I couldn't use that voucher. I had to let it lapse. I'm still living at the Washington Square Apartments, still dealing with the allergies. Some days, like today, are not as good as others. And there's just nowhere, even if I had a voucher, there's nowhere to put it. So, this has been a building problem that, quite frankly, I must confess I'm annoyed, is only being addressed now. I apologize to you for that, but I do feel annoyed. And I do hope that the city does do something, like pass the income discrimination bill, so that my kind of people don't have to suffer anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. David Henkin, you're next, followed by Pearl Follett and Thelma Follett.
Hi, my name is David Henkin. I'm an attorney practicing, one area of my practice is tenant defense. I'm a staff attorney for law advocates, and I run a tenant clinic on Friday afternoons. So, I've been doing that for a few years. I just wanted to come down and lend my support to the idea of ordinance preventing source of income discrimination for renters. I would second all the folks who say they feel that kind of discrimination is unjust and unfair. It gives me a disturbing feeling in my stomach when I look online at an advertisement and see no Section 8 across the ad for available housing. I think even if there's some argument as to what is unjust and unfair, no one could disagree that this kind of discrimination is grossly inefficient. With all the energy just in this room, all the agencies, and all the efforts, your own efforts, all the money being spent to try to help people find housing, and then to put a roadblock, a meaningless, blind roadblock, to just say, "Based on your source of income, you will not be considered." That's just inefficient, and I applaud your efforts in looking into this, and I support that change. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Pearl Follett, you're next, then Thelma Follett, and then Ed Moran.
Okay. I'm Pearl Follett. I live at 2605 Lakewood Lane in Bellingham. The deer problem is not due to the feeding of deer by residents, citizens, or others who reside in Bellingham or roam around Bellingham. Therefore, placing a fine on deer feeders will not substantially reduce the deer population. The deer problem is a result of the destruction of the natural habitats, of the destruction by homes and other buildings in Bellingham. Their remain has been invaded without regard of where they're to go. A case in point is what has happened behind my yard, my own backyard. When I first moved into my home, the land behind my back fence was very beautiful, with trees, shrubs, and natural grasses, that the birds in the sky, the bees and butterflies, and animals both large and small enjoyed. A beautiful eagle made a nest across the street. I enjoyed watching these little paradise, and I didn't know it was going to be destroyed. Now, there's not a tree left behind my house. The eagle departed, and this beautiful flight is a thing left to my memory. The rabbits are not seen. The bees are few, and the butterflies are even fewer. But the deer come through, even though they're frightened by the hammers and the big building equipment behind my house. Behind my fence, I now have four huge, oversized houses that face into my backyard, and there are two more are being constructed. As I write this, I can see a huge hole behind my fence about three feet away for another house going in. We are responsible members of the human species, and we owe it to these beautiful animals of God's creation to provide for them in a nonviolent manner that is kind, humane, and compassionate. The building behind my back fence, of course, is not an isolated example of human destruction of our natural habitats or our natural resources. It's only one of the many dozens of land areas in Bellingham that's being destroyed. This is part of the world's problem, and we're part of the whole, and what we decide tonight is very important. Please do not consider placing fines on the innocents who did not create the deer problem. If you want to place blame, place it on the constructionists. If any fines are to be given, impose it on them. Birth deer control is possible. You can control deer population by birth control. This can be paid for by putting taxes and fines on the construction that's going in for these huge homes. The people need protection from those who would willingly impose mental violence on them by turning them in for being a suspected deer feeder. Please do not place the blame on us. Please vote no on this bill, and then gather humanitarians together and people of goodwill who will devise a plan so that we may improve both human life and that of our fellow animals, both large and small.
Thank you, Pearl. Up next is Thelma Follett, followed by Ed, I'm thinking it's Moran, and then Michelle Ewing.
I'm Thelma Follett. I live at 2605 Lakewood Lane with Pearl Follett, and I'm actually speaking for my sister. She's working tonight, but we share the same opinions, as you already know, about the deer ban ordinance. So, let's see. Carol says here, "As the creatures most physically dexterous and intelligent, we are logically the creatures ordained with the responsibility for keeping a healthy and sustainable balance between serving our human needs and the larger needs of our interdependent species. We have to have a conversation about the impact our buildings, roads, and traffic have on the deer existence. The fact that we have many parks and greenways demonstrates that our city councils have, at one time, acknowledged the value of green spaces to our well-being. Now, we need to examine how the wildlife will fare along those greenways. Do we let them roam with not enough vegetation for healthy sustenance and grow sick? We need to have a more complete and clear plan for the deer than this ordinance, and not leave it to happenstance, where they may or may not have a place to carry on the necessities of their procreation and survival. Where is the education for our community on this fact?" And then she quotes, "With rapid development of rural areas, deer are losing their natural habitats and are forced further into suburbia. They now live close to our homes and towns. In a world where contact with wildlife is more frequent, we may need to change some of our behavior to find ways to live with them. To coexist with deer, they must be understood." End quote. And then she says, "Since, quote, 'an experienced mother typically returns to the same fawning territory that she used in previous years,' how will they carry on when these spaces no longer exist? This ordinance should be tabled for further study and long-term solutions that do not find citizens and pit neighbor against neighbor, rather than examining how development is causing harm to the wildlife. Sincerely, Carol Follett." Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, you are next, followed by Michelle Ewing, and then April McCabe.
Great. Thank you. My name is Ed Moran, and I come here in support of an ordinance to prevent income discrimination and uses of Section 8s. I myself, I'm in transitional housing now. I'm a homeless vet who is slowly making my way back. Unfortunately, as I look out onto the market and watch the rentals slowly climb in price, it reminds me what happened back in the Bay Area. I grew up in Cupertino. Back then, it was a very small farm town with apricot orchards and the like. Went to St. Joseph's. As time went on and Silicon Valley arrived, the rents suddenly exploded in price, and far, far faster than the rate of inflation, far faster than the rise in salaries. Soon, everybody had to leave the town. They moved over the hill into Modesto and Turlock and parts in the Central Valley, heading down into Salinas, creating hour-long commutes back and forth to work. Bellingham seems to be facing the same phenomenon. As the rentals rise in price here in town, people will be forced to move out into other parts of the county, out toward Kendall, or down south into Mount Vernon, or into Everett. With that comes an increase in traffic, increase in expenses, a drop in the quality of life, the beginning of a migration of your better people as a lead to search for better places. So, while we go through this rebalancing of our rentals, we'll need to have the flexibility of financing the use of Section 8s, the use of public funds, or any alternative sources of income for when you're trying to qualify for rental. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Michelle, you are next, after Michelle's April McCabe, and then Hannah Fishman.
Hello, I'm Michelle Ewing, and I just wanted to speak in favor of the ordinance against income discrimination. I, too, currently live in transitional housing, and I'm on set to complete my I too currently live in transitional housing, and I'm on set to complete my case plan three months after my child comes. And after that, I will have a Section 8 Choice Housing voucher. And it's kind of scary for me because it's basically a coin toss, and this is, you know, supposed to be the last-ditch option. I'm a hard-working, independent woman. I work. I recently graduated from Waukam Community College, and my last quarter, I was couch surfing for the majority of the time. I just, I want to provide a good future for my child and continue on improving myself. And, you know, I cannot get the career that I was going into at this time. If I go and interview, I'm going to face pregnancy discrimination. And later down the line, if, you know, I still have that going on, or hey, have some postpartum issues, you know, I don't want another barrier. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. After Michelle is April McCabe, followed by Hannah Fishman, and then Cora Cole.
Hi, my name's April McCabe. I am a housing case manager at Opportunity Council and also a member of the Bellingham Tenants Union. I am agreeing with a lot of folks that have already spoken today in that I urge you to pass an ordinance to ban income discrimination. I also applaud you for your efforts and the discussions you have been having so far. That's really wonderful. I work with a lot of individuals that have fixed incomes, Social Security, temporary assistance for needy families, or have maybe zero incomes, but have the privilege to be receiving assistance through Opportunity Council or Lydia Place or some other partnering agency. And right now, we can't, we can't serve our most vulnerable population in our community because of the discrimination that's going on. So I hope this support has helped.
Thank you. Hannah Fishman, you were next, followed by Cora Cole, and then Everett Barton.
Hi, my name's Hannah Fishman, and I'm a member of the Bellingham Tenants Union. And I'm speaking today in support of the draft legislation presented this morning on tenant protections, along with many other people here today. So, you know, we definitely need to ban source of income discrimination in this city, and I think that that is, has been really clear for months, and I really also applaud you for working on it, and I think it's been clear from everyone's comments today that it's a huge and important issue and barrier to making housing accessible in this city. And I also want to speak in support of the proposed lengthened timeframes for either no-cause eviction or raising rents. I know that for, you know, the normal experience for a renter in this city is to have, you know, a rent increase of like $75, $100 or more dumped on you really quickly, which makes it very difficult to budget, especially as we just don't go up at that rate. So I think it's really laudable that we're expanding that timeframe, and I think it's a really good start to making, to making housing more affordable here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Cora Cole, you are next, followed by Everett Barton, and then Sandy Frederick.
Good evening, council and county members. I'm Cora Cole. I'm a student at Western, and I've been a resident of Bellingham for over two years now. Happy Coast Salish Day, everybody. Also, tonight, I'm going to be speaking very briefly. I want to second the things that Hannah has said about extending timelines. I think that that's a really important part of protecting housing security and the rights of tenants, and I think that's a very important thing. Secondly, I want to say a couple things in solidarity with recipients of Section 8 here tonight on the issue of source of income discrimination. In a survey last year, the, like, two of the top three issues that people in Bellingham notice are issues of housing availability. This, the concerns in this survey come primarily from people who generally have pretty comfortable housing situations, and the fact that that is a concern for everyone in the community, I think, should be a wake-up call, and I think it has been for us. Receivers of Section 8 are overwhelmingly disabled, frequently veterans, and largely families. These are people who have frequently, you have frequently in the past, as a council, claimed to speak for, and I think on this issue, y'all have been overwhelmingly clear in speaking for yourselves tonight. A lot of the time, finding answers to questions of housing is really, really complicated. It involves more buildings, it involves infill, it involves a lot of infill. But this is a solution that already exists, and by preventing discrimination, you can make that solution more strong. It's not the, like, final solution to every single housing problem ever, obviously, but it's an absolutely crucial piece for any and all work that is done on housing discrimination and on housing availability in Bellingham, because however many homes we have available, and however many brackets of however many sizes, they should be homes that anyone can stay in. Thank you for all your work, and I look forward to hearing more from you and from all of my fellow Bellingham citizens. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Cora. Up next is Everett Barton, followed by Sandy Frederick, and our last speaker will be Bob Burr.
Hi, Everett Barton, Puget neighborhood. And I want to reference the Cascadia article Tim Johnson wrote, and I kind of feel like a poster boy for that article, because it was referring to elderly and disabled. And, you know, my, the title of my talk tonight, Michael, is Political Will. It's really, it's really about housing. And I want to just say that I am and have been helped by this body and by the staff of Opportunity Council and by Law Advocates. And I'm not in a crisis mode. I missed the Lake Waukam meeting today, Dan, because I am experiencing housing crisis. But, you know, as someone has said in history, we have not, we're just, we're just beginning to fight as activists, and, you know, there's more to be done, and I'm not scrutinizing my, the details of, you know, I'm not picking at the scab of my discrimination. I'm leaving that alone to one side, and I encourage everyone here to recognize and realize that we're all, we're all caught, we can't escape corporatism. We are, as voters, shareholders of this corporation and shareholders of the county corporation. And, and we have a very important role as voters and shareholders. And, and I'm glad to see this body and Mayor, your nice words, and Tim Johnson's article. But political will is, is, needs, needs a different kind of basis. And the basis that I'm troubled with and working on is that we, we are able to take these kinds of sentiments and energize communities of faith, because they're really, we are all part of a community of faith somehow, and that's where the political will needs to be found and generated, so that people come up with additional resource, revenue resources to help the city, you know, solve some of these problems. So that's, that's kind of what I would urge, I urged that at the county council last time and probably again tomorrow night. And, you know, just the idea that, to take, to take what we're talking about in council and put it into our communities of faith and let people know, without a newspaper article and without seeing something on TV, that you have a role to play too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Everett. Sandy Frederick, you are next, and our last speaker will be Bob Burr.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Sandy Frederick, and I'm a member of the Ladies Twilight League at Lake Patton, and I've played golf there for 25 years. I was also on the committee to review and rate the four management proposals for the management of Lake Patton. I rated Premier the total of 100 points based on their management ability and successful history managing other courses, their enthusiastic plans for use of our golf course for activities other than just for golfers. They have plans to encourage beginner golf with lessons at the golf school, how they will treat the current employees we have, what they will do for the, and what they will do for our course clubs, and their plans for course management, and, of course, how they will benefit our city. I will not be happy, after all the work we've done, at the thought of Lake Patton being run by any other management company besides Premier. I urge you to please approve Parks and Rec's request for exemption of the living wage requirement, so we can get down to the business of working with Premier immediately. We currently have a pro, a golf pro and a talented maintenance crew we don't want to lose. Thank you, and let me introduce other members of our ladies golf league, who, if I may speak for them, feel the same as I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Bob, go ahead.
My name is Bob Burr, and I'm from the Barkley District, and I'm delighted that my health is finally well enough again that I can be back in council chambers to pester you all. I, I haven't been here since there was the new seating arrangement with Michael at the chair, but I think it's totally appropriate, because I see Terry on my left and Jean on my right. I, I said that to try to force smiles from you, because often when I look from the audience, you guys are all too inscrutable. I regard five of you as my friends, and the two newest members of the council, I hope, will be my friends someday. I didn't come here to talk about infill, but what I came here to talk about relates to that. I'm here in opposition to the ordinance to outlaw the feeding of deer and other wild varmints such as raccoons in Bellingham. We are an overregulated city already, and this would just be one more restriction on our freedom. For the benefit of the deer? Seriously? If you're concerned about health benefits, why not start with humans and ban making an offense to sell or buy junk food in the city of Bellingham? I have not read the ordinance, only of the ordinance in the papers. What will subject me to punishment? If I have a fenced yard and include a deer in it as a pet, will that be an offense? If I have a non-fenced yard and I allow them to eat my flowers and shrubbery, as I do today, will that be an offense? If I throw food scraps on my property and the deer come and eat it, will that be an offense? Or does it require me to feed them by hand? What will be the future? Will it include ducks at Lake Patton, birds in my bird feeder, bears in my bird feeder? We have witnessed a human population explosion that has taken away the areas in which deer used to feed, and to ban us from feeding these creatures is beyond the pale.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our 15-minute public comment period that went on for almost 45. You might want to stick around, because some of the topics that you discussed this evening are indeed on our agenda, starting with the reports from our regular committees this afternoon. Actually, this morning, the Planning Committee made a 10:30, and report on that is the Chair of that committee, Gene Knutson.
Thank you very much, Michael. We had two items this morning. The first item was a follow-up discussion on rental barrier issues. This morning, we heard a report from Rick Seppler, Peter Raffado. So I'm going to go right into it. We have had almost a year's worth of meetings, and I think you'll be happy with the three motions that come out of this committee this morning. The first motion was to move the source of income discrimination out of the Planning Committee to the full council and directed staff to develop an ordinance. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second, we have a motion before us to direct the staff to develop an ordinance banning source of income discrimination. Is there any further discussion on this?
Take your pick.
Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Unfortunately, Terry's out of the room. He's going to regret that. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's a 6-0, with Terry Bornham out of the room on income discrimination.
Okay, the next item is it was moved out of committee to include in the ordinance an exemption for people who are renting a portion of single-family dwelling when the owner or person entitled to possession maintains a permanent residence in the dwelling. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
You have a motion before us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, could you restate that motion?
I tend to read a little bit too fast. I'll slow it down. It was moved to include in the ordinance an exemption for people who are renting a portion of a single-family dwelling when the owner or person entitled to possession maintains a permanent residence in the dwelling.
In other words, if this is your own house, would you be subject to the same anti-discrimination things? Or, for example, if you live in your own house, can you choose, say, to rent to a man and not a woman, or vice versa, or accept pets or whatever? I don't know what the rules are. So that is a motion, and was it seconded?
I, I need to move it, though. Committee recommends approval, and I so move. I'm sorry.
I second.
Okay, but a motion before us to further direct the staff to add a provision which exempts from, this is from which of the many things that were talked about? Just source of income, or that has to do with something else?
It's part of the source of income discrimination.
With part of the source of income discrimination.
Yeah, the staff's going to bring it back to us.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Go ahead, April.
Yeah, April. So this is common in some ordinances. It has the word "single family," but, Peter, you might be able to help me, this is a legal term. So this is basically in any single residential unit. If you're the owner and you're renting out rooms, this could provide an exemption. We were torn on this, and we thought that this would be a really good thing to hear back from the community, so it's there, and we're very interested to hear if people feel like that can be an exemption. It could be very difficult for the, for the city to enforce and could create some logistical problems, but we can look into that. So this is something we decided to go ahead and put on there, and if you go back and watch our meeting, you'll see that we're really just looking for some feedback. So if you get a chance to look at other communities and think about our community, you can give us some feedback on, do you think that that's an exemption that we should make?
Further discussion? Dan?
I just want to clarify that the example that was given was single woman with kids, owns a home, rents rooms out, chooses not to rent out to a male. That was the example that was provided for us.
Well, I must say, this provision kind of confuses me a bit, because we're talking about source of income discrimination. It seems to me that that, that person has a basis to potentially deny rental has nothing to do with income. I'm, I guess I'm, I guess it is... I guess the discussion had to do primarily with that it would be difficult to police that function, but it seems like the -- yeah. So I think what April was suggesting is that the motion would be to include the ordinance, and whenever the draft ordinance comes forward, we can debate it once again.
Yeah, that's why we were torn on it, so we're going to let them hear from the citizens and from the rest of the council.
Right. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? No? That passes 6-1.
And the last motion is to move 60 days' notice of eviction if there is no good cause. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion before us to increase the notification -- this is for eviction -- from the currently required statutory under state law 20 days to 60 days. That's if there is no cause. If there's cause, different rules apply for eviction. Although, there's a -- any further discussion? April.
Did you have a separate one that included the 60 days for more than 10%? Or was that -- that was part of this?
That was part of them. I'm just reading what was written down.
Yeah, so that one also includes 60 days' notice for increase of rent more than 10%.
Yeah, that's right.
So both 60 days, one for if you want to evict somebody with no just cause or good cause, and the other is if you're going to increase rent over 10%.
That's what Marie and I forgot to put in there. You're absolutely right.
That's what you meant to say?
Yes.
And is there any objection to having a motion? Understand that it's to create a 60-day notification limit, both for eviction without cause and for any rental increase which is over 10%.
That's correct.
Okay. Any further -- excuse me? Any further discussion? Dan?
Just want to point out that the staff recommendation was 45 days for the lack of notice prior to -- for rent increases, and the planning committee this morning decided to -- wanted 60 days.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. That also passes?
Go ahead.
Oh, no. You go ahead.
Yeah, the last -- the next item was a committee discussion of potential approaches and techniques to provide additional housing choices in Bellingham. That is ongoing. That will be ongoing for a long time, so we'll be back at that again in a few weeks.
Can I add one thing, Gene? So in our packet, it was also looking at, I think it was a request of the tenant union for voter registration information. So staff is currently working on that because that can happen within administration to add that to our rental registration. That has to be posted in every rental so that people can access that information as well, but it will be separate from our ordinance.
Yes.
Terry?
Yeah, I just want to say, with these, we're moving them forward for further discussion and things later, but I do hope that at any point, if we do draft the legislation, that we do have a public hearing.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Because, you know, we need to hear -- a lot of times here, we hear from one side. We don't hear from the other coming to this meeting, but there would be for public, and we need to hear the full story of everything before I can vote for it.
Oh, yeah. Well, I -- we'll have a public hearing.
So, to be clear, there's no legal requirement to hold a public hearing, but what I'm hearing is that we would want to hold an optional hearing if we -- on this. Yeah. There was also discussion of the issue of so-called mass displacement. If an affordable rental complex was taken over and flipped and sold and made more expensive, I think the case was -- one case is a rental house, another case, an apartment building, another would be a mobile home court, and I think that we were told that those would be dealt with separately and later.
Oh, I forgot that that is going to be brought forward next year when we do our comp plan updates. I forgot. I'm not a note taker, and it's obvious because I don't take enough -- Marie wrote this up for me, so I -- full disclosure, but yeah, that's going to be part of our discussion. It's going to happen in April. April.
April. I hope that's soon enough.
Well, that's as soon as they can get it to us.
Any further discussion on the items of the planning committee? Okay. End of committee, excuse me. Thank you very much, Gene. So this is how sausage is made, one ingredient at a time. The next committee we met this afternoon was a justice committee, and the chair of that committee is Councilman April Barker.
Thank you. We had one item for committee. It was information only. It was alternatives to incarceration. If you haven't already, this council has chosen this year to start a justice committee, something we haven't had before, giving justice just as much time and energy as we give parks and public works. Our first set of meetings has really just been trying to unpack and understand the judicial system. So if you're interested in learning along with us, you can go to the city council's webpage, click on Hot Topics, and then go to -- well, if you're interested in affordable housing, you can go there, or if you're interested in the justice committee, you can go there. And we try to make it really simple so you can just click video, click video, click video, instead of having to do the old way of trying to figure out when we talked about something. So today, our lesson was on alternatives to incarceration, and we had Darling Peterson, municipal court administrator, and Ryan Anderson, lead prosecutor, who almost can talk as fast as I can. So that was really interesting to watch and always a learning experience for me to slow down a little bit. Sorry, I'd like to give him a hard time about that. So you can watch that and download our packet as well. It talked about, basically, you know, the two categories, pre-conviction, or what you hear is pre-trial, or post-conviction, and tried to make it pretty clear that pre-conviction or pre-trial, that's where the true diversions can come into play, and diversions for not even going to jail potentially. If you've done something wrong and you want to make amends and you can do community service, maybe we just completely divert you from jail and hopefully keep you from coming back to court and having to deal with those issues. We have reduced charge infractions, deferred prosecution, compromise of misdemeanor, mental health court, pre-trial supervision, and SCRAM and EHM, basically bracelets that can test alcohol and can tell us exactly where you are so that you can stay out of jail and do your -- well, that's in post-conviction sentencing later. And then those post-convictions, the hope is to reduce that recidivism, right, and in some ways, some diversion. So, community service, release to inpatient treatment, probation, jail alternatives, which include DB Court, work release crews, electronic co-monitoring detention, and the EHM, which those are when defendants are able to serve their sentence on a GPS bracelet. And I'll give you a few numbers here, which I think are really important. So as of August 2017, we had 206 defendants completed their serving sentencing, which totaled 5,477 days, and they did that on the bracelet. The cost to the city from January through August of 2017 to supplement these defendants was $51,742, and the cost was a little slightly higher this year because pre-trial defendants who use the SCRAM, which I think that's the one that tests alcohol, bracelets is being paid for by the city as the defendant has not yet been found guilty. It goes on to talk about if we would have placed those people in Wacom County Jail at the current rate of $108 per day, that would have cost the taxpayers $592,254 compared to the $51,742. So it was acknowledged by the courts that that's not our main motivation, the money, although sometimes that helps us get our ducks in a row and figure out how we can do better. But you also have to understand, these people were still able to work, pick up their kids from school, take care of their issues, go to their doctor's appointments. So it also just makes for, hopefully, a better community in the end. There's a lot more information than that if you're interested in that. On October 23rd, we will have a full-hour session, and that's Liz Swabola. She's -- and her team's going to come and give us a report on the Vera report. And then November 6th, we're going to talk about the criminal justice spending. So if you'd like to come to those, they're typically in the afternoon. You can find out usually the Thursday before. And that's end of committee.
Okay, thank you. And just to make it clear to people, all these diversions are done under court supervision for non-violent offenders who are deemed by the court to be safe. So we're not releasing anyone who's committed a violent crime or is accused of a violent crime. Those are handled separately, and they have a different set of rules which apply to them. Okay, thank you very much for the report, April. We go on to the next committee, which is Public Works Public Safety. Terry, I'd like to give that report.
We had two items before the committee today. The first was a bid award for the Granary Avenue and Laurel -- for Laurel Street. The Granary Avenue and Laurel Street project involves construction of a new roadway including municipal utility sidewalks, a marine outfall, two-way cycle track landscaping, and Port of Bellingham requested utility infrastructure from Roder to Cornwall. The city received seven bids, which were publicly opened on September 20th, 2017. Ram Construction General Contractors LLC of Bellingham, Washington was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $8,710,938.08, including any applicable Washington State sales or use tax. The engineering estimate was for $10,799,933.31. Staff recommended awarding the bid, including the Schedule E Biddle additive to Ram Construction General Contractors LLC. The committee today agreed with staff and recommended -- and moved to award the contract to Ram Construction, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the bid to construct Granary Avenue and Laurel Street. I would note that the funding for that includes both county economic development dollars, state authorized lift dollars, our own street fund, as well as a federal grant. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the bid award signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes 7-0.
Our next item was an amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham for port utility infrastructure installation associated with the Granary Avenue and Laurel Street project. The city and the port are parties to the interlocal agreement between the city of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham for installation, operation, and maintenance of casting conduit and district energy piping with Granary Avenue and Laurel Street. The city has opened bids and is preparing to award the project. The attached proposed amendments modifies the existing interlocal to revive and/or include specific municipal services, contaminated soil removal associated with franchise utilities and other infrastructure items to be installed at the port's expense as part of the Granary Avenue and Laurel Street project. Staff recommended that the council authorize the mayor to enter into the proposed amendments in substantially the form attached, including in minor modifications that do not substantially affect the substance of the amendment. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion before us to approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city and the port with regard to the infrastructure installed underneath Granary Avenue and Laurel Street. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That also passes 7-0. Terry, did it? Okay, we'll go on to Finance and Personnel. Roxanne Murphy is the chair for that.
We had one agenda item, this receipt and spending of a port security grant from U.S. Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $194,456. The committee this afternoon recommended unanimous approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to recognize the receipt and authorize the spending for a security grant from Homeland Security in the amount of $194,456 for a bomb disposal trailer. Any discussion -- further discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
End of committee.
I think there was a small local match. It was mostly paid for. Okay, Parks and Recreation Committee, sorry about that. April, Councilwoman April Barker, Chair of Parks and Recreation.
You just can't help yourself. We had two items for committee, and I was joined by Councilmember Vargas and Murphy. The first is easement for public access and termination of existing easement for the trail corridor next to Bellingham Options High School. And if you don't know, that Bellingham's Options is open, and we did end up having to close a small part of the trail there to accommodate a full field and the beautiful building that the students that attend Options absolutely deserve. And with that, we just had to switch some easements around. So I don't think anything's -- I guess I should read exactly what the easements were just for the public. The paved bike and pedestrian trail that started at Ohio Street heading northeast into the Sunnyland neighborhood was modified to allow for the building of Option High School. Previous easement connected to an alley right-of-way that was vacated by council as a part of the development, and this new easement terminates the old easement and replaces it with a 16-foot wide corridor from Ohio to Franklin Street. The paved trail has been built, and it is open to the public already. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to replace existing easement and replace a new easement for public access and termination of -- on the trail corridor next to Bellingham Options High School. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Also, 7-0. Thank you.
Okay, and the next item for council was -- or for parks, sorry, was a bid award for Waypoint Park, because this is the new name of the park down at the waterfront, so Waypoint Park. Let's see, it's located in Bellingham's New Waterfront District. This project includes beach creation, playground, waterfront trail, art, which is the big acid ball that you'll be able to see is going to go down there, near-shore habitat, and so much more. Other improvements to the adjoining Central Avenue Pier are underway, and together with the Central Pier, this park encompasses over 1.5 acres of public park development. The city received eight bids, which were publicly opened on September 20th, 2017. The presumptive lower bidder was Harcourt Development Construction LLC, and they were determined to be non-responsive and not in compliance with the mandatory bidder responsibilities criteria. The next lower bidder is Strider Construction Company, Inc. The third lower -- low bidder, Ram Construction General Contractors LLC, protested Strider's bid. This is like As Bellingham Turns, but that protest was rejected by staff, and therefore, the staff recommends this contract be awarded to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Strider Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $2,483,317.47. Today, the committee voted unanimously to award the bid, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the bid award for the Wacom Waterway Park. Just for information, the Wacom Waterway Park is along the Granary Avenue you just saw off right --
I don't think so.
And one of the things that was discussed is that early action building that road will be the first part of Laurel Avenue, which will actually -- Granary Avenue, which will actually allow easier access for building of the park. Any further discussion other than my editorializing?
The -- there will be -- the pier will be open by the end of November, we're hoping, and most of this work by the end of 2018 at the latest, so it's pretty exciting. You're actually going to get down there and touch it. It's going to be great.
Pinky? Okay. Anything else? All those in favor of the bid award signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
End of committee.
Okay, we now go on to Community Economic Development. Councilmember Pinky Vargas is the chair of that committee.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item in front of us today. We had a review of the assessment of the fair housing update and discussion. This is mandated by the feds, and in 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act was made federal law and makes it unlawful to refuse to sell, rent to, or negotiate with someone because of their race, gender, religion, et cetera. So there are seven protected classes under there, and including also, the state of Washington has three additional ones, which are marital status, sexual orientation or gender identity, and veteran or military status. We also in Bellingham have an age discrimination. Two things that you note or not in there is students or income, but we're going to change the income, so that's -- this report is really extensive and very interesting. It is over 80 pages long, so if you're interested, there is a lot of information around our demographics, around where many of our low-income neighborhoods are, and also different areas in regards to what our goals are going to be around how we can improve any areas of discrimination. So there is a plan in here in regards to what is called the Assessment of Fair Housing, or AFH, which we have to do every five years. So there are some really -- we don't have the overheads, but there are some really great maps in regards to income disparity throughout the city and areas, et cetera. There is also information in here on our population data in regards to race and ethnicity and how our demographics have been changing in Bellingham, and how we can actually make a plan to improve some areas. Now, some things that are not included but were the most pertinent in the surveys and the community outreach that we did, and the number one thing was affordability. Of course, this is not part of the discrimination, but it is our biggest barrier. We did extensive outreach in regards to all the different ways that We did extensive outreach in regards to all the different ways that we were, that we reached out to different communities to make sure that we had participation across the board. Every neighborhood responded, and we had over two thousand responses to our survey on discrimination, on housing discrimination. So again, if you're interested, it is very informative. I thought it was excellent information if you want to see where we are at in regards to our housing and discrimination in Bellingham. And proposed goals, so we have four of them. Goal one, implement adopted city planning policies through appropriate development regulations that support expanded housing choice and increased inventory, and this is obviously something we've been hearing over and over and over again, and this is our number one goal. Number two, examine where the city may want to add protections for people who are facing house discriminate, housing discrimination. And goal three, provide education on fair housing to renters and tenants, as well as property managers and owners to increase a public understanding of fair housing laws and how to report discrimination. In the report, one of the things that came back was, most people weren't even sure how to report discrimination in housing, so we realize that that is a very important part of educational, that we could do as a city to provide and help people through discrimination. And then goal four was provide support and advocacy for households receiving housing vouchers through utilization of landlord liaisons and housing case managers who can advocate on their behalf and provide education. So these are very real-time issues that we're dealing with. These are goals, but some of these things we're hoping to affect sooner than later. So again, this assessment of fair housing, this report is online for anybody who wants to take a look at it, but there is very interesting and valuable information that we are going to use in regards to moving forward, to making sure that we are providing fair access and affordability for everyone in Bellingham. End of committee.
Hey, thank you, Pinky.
Still open? The survey still open?
I'm sorry, thank you. So this is, this was for information only, but it is open for comment until October sixteenth. So if there is anybody who wants additional feedback or provide any additional information that you would like to say in regards to discrimination or things that you've experienced, we would like to hear that. Again, it's open until October sixteenth. End of committee.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go on to our last committee, which is Committee of the Whole. We had several items. The first item was ordinance prohibiting deer feeding and raccoons within the city of Bellingham. Many wild animals have adapted to the urban environment and are experiencing setting increases in population. However, intentional feeding of wildlife supports additional population growth and further concentrates animals in small areas, hastening the spread of disease in animal populations, increasing the risk of animal deaths in traffic, and increasing human animal conflicts. The intentional feeding of wild animals by humans can also adversely affect the animal's health. The city council has received a number of complaints from residents about problems created by intentionally feeding wild animals, several different kinds of animals, particularly deer, however. The ordinance, this in our packet, would prohibit the feeding of deer and raccoons, intentional feeding of deer and raccoons within the city limits. This afternoon, the Committee of the Whole recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion on this issue?
So I was the only one that voted against it this afternoon. I, I want to be clear that I, I do know and completely understand that feeding wild animals, especially deer and raccoons, is inappropriate and is not healthy for them. You really need to know a lot about it. However, we're going to urbanize more and more, we're going to have more and more problems with deer and other animals, and although Pearl, I'm pretty sure that I came up with these words on my own, but I did say earlier we needed a long-term, complete and clear plan. So I do agree with you on that, and I would hope that we would take the time to go through that and figure out what that's going to look like, so that as we put an ordinance like this through, we'll have that whole process of knowing exactly what we're going to need to do as, as things are going to get worse. And so my, my biggest concern with it is we do have a lot of things on the books, and I know sometimes it's good to put them on there. I totally agree that like no smoking's in the parks and trails. We weren't going to enforce that, but it was just as the mother's sitting there playing, you know, your kid's on the swing, you just had a little bit more courage to say, hey, there really shouldn't be smoking here, and nobody was, has been calling the cops on that. But this, people have said, they, they want to call, they want enforcement, and we don't have a way to enforce, and it worries me that we'll lose, I don't know, some efficacy or some trust from the constituents that are going to call us to want us to enforce this, and we're just not going to be able to do it. So I'm not, it's not that I'm not supporting it. I know the people that are having these issues are having a real tough time. I just want to take a different action for it, so I'll be voting no.
Pinky?
I just want to say that, you know, the question of more regulation, more rules in the city, et cetera, I, I understand that point, but also, it's our job as city council members to respond to residents. We have hundreds of emails and calls and requests for us to do something, so it is our job to respond to residents who are asking us to do something, just like we did with fireworks and just like we did for smoking in the parks. So it is our responsibility to respond to our residents who are asking for our help and to develop policy. That's why we're here, so that is why I am voting for this.
This is the public process right here. You're witnessing it. Please, no speaking from the floor. The experts are unanimous in their agreement that it's an unhealthy practice. Experts in the Humane Society, expert in fish and wildlife, it's very clear this is not healthy for the deer, and I disagree that these are displaced deer. These are deer we are growing and feeding here in Bellingham, and there's a certain natural carrying population to an urban environment by them just eating natural vegetation, eating some of our gardens, eating fallen apples. That's all well and good, and that's not the problem. The problem is the unnatural concentration of deer being given an artificial diet leading to behaviors which are not good for the deer and not good for the community. This is a symbol, I would say garden variety nuisance ordinance that's not directed at the deer, is directed at people who are making a problem. So I don't think the problem's going to get worse. I think we'll reach a steady state of the natural population of deer in urban environments, and we don't know what that number is right now, but I think it's lower than the current one. Any further discussion on an ordinance prohibiting deer, the feeding of deer and wild raccoons within the city of Bellingham? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That passes six one. Thank you very much. The next item for Committee of the Whole was something that was added late to our agenda, but it was properly noticed before the weekend. It's an approval on exemption to the city's living wage requirement for the management of Lake Patton Golf Course. This has to do with the fact that if we approve a new contract, whether or not we apply a law which has maybe not been applied before, the so-called living wage requirement. The city has issued a request or proposals for the operation of the Lake Patton Golf Course, because the old management was withdrawing, and is negotiating with a management company that does have expertise in running eleven municipal golf courses here in Western Washington. They are requesting an exemption from the living wage ordinance, because the required wages are, under the ordinance, would likely exceed what would be paid at comparable private golf courses and actually would exceed the prevailing wage, which is actually still required under the law. The city council may grant an exemption to the requirements of this chapter upon making a finding that compliance of the living wage, compliance with the living wage will cause economic hardship to the city or its citizens, or is due to special or unforeseen circumstances. As I said, the management company would still be required to pay state prevailing wages for all positions and actually pays well above the prevailing wage and the living wage for most of its positions. This would apply primarily to seasonal employees at the golf course. The staff reported that they're still actively negotiating all the details and is concerned about the fact that as of December thirty-first, we will no longer have any management in place for the golf course, and they're seeking to, this exemption now so they can continue with the discussions. We had an interesting discussion this afternoon, and I'm bringing forward a mixed recommendation. Four council members voted to approve the exemption, but three council members actually abstained, and I'll let them speak for themselves. I'm going to go ahead and not make a motion at this point and open up the discussion.
I'll make the motion I made this afternoon, that we accept exemption for the new golf purveyor.
I'll second that.
We have a motion before us to approve an exemption to the living wage requirement for the management of Lake Patton Golf Course. Any further discussion? Dan?
Just want to explain my position that I took this afternoon. What we were presented with is a memo dated October sixth that has a narrative in it. What does lack, so this proposal lacks basic financials, including profit and loss statement, liability to revenue statement, projected quarterly or annual revenues to the city, or even length of contract. Without this information, I can't vote for this, I just can't, so my abstention will stand.
Yeah, I'm going to just stay with my same vote as earlier, to abstain, because this didn't come in the packet, so we could ask questions about this, and, and there was no financial information to make that determination, and so I just, it was something, and I know staff wants it right now, but I'm not, I didn't get the information to be able to make a proper determination, especially, yeah, and so we didn't get a chance for other people to hear or know what was going on with, with that. I think it's probably a good idea to, of the company, no problem with that, and I want to see great success out at, at Patton, but just in terms of me being able to vote, I need information, and I need it in a timely manner so that I can be able to make an informed, fully informed vote, so I'm going to abstain.
Roxanne?
This is not me voting blindly. I completely trust in parks, and I trust in administration. I trust in our golf services that we have been providing for a number of years through management contracts and the establishment of such contracts. I want golf to continue, and I want it to be continuously. I want it to continue for the quality of life that it provides for our community, and also just to make sure that we have this service available without interruption. That's what our community deserves, and that's what I'll support.
Jean? Just to be clear, we're voting on the exemption now. The contract will be negotiated and I assume brought back to us? Or is, or is this it? I'm just, this...
Apparently, it's not a requirement to bring it back, but we could.
Oh, okay. Well, all I'm saying is that under normal circumstances, this wasn't a normal circumstance. I assume during the negotiation, this was brought up, and it is a problem, and like I said this afternoon, it is a problem if we end up with having to manage that golf course by ourselves, and I don't want to see that. I agree with Roxanne, I fully trust the staff and what they've asked us for. They probably realized what they were going to face here this afternoon, and they brought it forward anyway, and that takes courage, and I applaud that, and I'll support it.
So I was hoping, Ms. Bryson, that you might have a little further financial information for us, but Jean makes a good point. We're talking about whether or not to, in our negotiating, be able to negotiate on, on wage requirement issues to still require prevailing wage, but I think there was still some question about the entirety of the, of the proposed contract for management services.
Yes, so I apologize that this came to you so late. It was only determined on Friday that this would apply, and because we are trying to move forward with negotiations so we can develop a budget and have a profit and loss statement, but, and I also want to be clear that premier is not asking for this exemption, the city is asking for this exemption. This really doesn't affect premier at all. This affects city, city dollars and city budget. All of the revenue will come to the city directly, it will be deposited into our account on the, on the day it's received, and then we will pay premier, reimburse them for each dollar spent with no markup. Their income is based on that management fee that they receive. So if more wages are paid, we're paying for those wages. So it doesn't really affect them at all, it just affects the, the city's budget and the operation of the golf course. But we did look at, based on the way it, it has been run and the wages that have been paid, it would probably be a between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional impact in the budget of the, the running of the golf course. That's partly because if some people now who work seasonal or part-time are bumped up to fifteen dollars, the full-time staff that are making fifteen dollars would have to be bumped up because they're going to be supervising those people, so there's compression issues, and it's kind of a domino effect. So we're looking at this because it does have a big impact on the budget of the golf course. It is operating on a fairly slim margin right now due to, to the economy and to the Canadian dollar. We've lost a lot of Canadians, and hopefully they'll be coming back and golfing at our courses, but it, it would be an impact on the running of the golf course to our city budget, not to premier. So that's why we brought it forward for an exemption. The minimum wage last year, which entry-level wages at the golf course that Lake Patton LLC paid was nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Those have gone up to eleven dollars this year, eleven fifty next year, and will ramp up to thirteen fifty in two thousand and twenty. That's the state mandated minimum wage, and then there, also the prevailing wages will be paid on some positions. So it does create an impact, but wages are, are also going up at a steady, a steady rate. So if we paid the, if we required these positions to be paid the living wage, those employees would actually be making more than some of our employees at the Aquatic Center, so.
Any further discussion? April?
Peter, you can go first if you want. Sorry.
Mr. Raffado?
Peter Raffado, City Attorney's Office. One of the things, if the council votes for the exemption, the ordinance provides it's upon a written finding of one of those two things, or both things, and that is that it would cause economic hardship to the city and/or the citizens, and/or the exemption is the best interest of the city due to unforeseen or special circumstances. So I just, that should be reflected in the minutes if the council votes affirmatively to do that.
Okay.
So earlier today, I, and it might have been in a conversation after our council meeting, but I thought that, that the number was thirteen dollars. You had just mentioned fifteen dollars for the, for the, what council passed in two thousand and two, which was a living wage.
Yeah, there's two rates. It's thirteen, sorry, I don't have the exact number, thirteen oh four, I think, if you get benefits, health benefits, but oftentimes seasonal positions and part-time, depending on your hours, may not have benefits. If you don't get benefits, it's just over fifteen dollars an hour, so that's where the fifteen dollars an hour comes from.
That, that two dollars more an hour, knowing that by two thousand and twenty-something, the minimum wage is going to go up, we'd still be supplementing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? I mean...
Well, this, this amount, the living wage would continue to go up by the inflationary rate each year as well.
So I think when the living wage was passed, it was substantially lower, and it was below the prevailing wage level back then.
Yeah.
You have history lesson, Jean?
Fifteen years ago, that's true.
I, I guess I'm still confused as to the rush on this. If it's not, if it, if they're still going to get, you're still going to negotiate and work with them on a contract, and this is more about our budget, then this is a discussion we can have, is, is the living wage even something that, that is, is still in the flow of as things move? Because before, it was because the prevailing wage was, was so much lower, so the council took it upon themselves, from what I understand, to make a living wage. And I think we're going to see where this is going to come into issues later, and Alan kind of gave us that foreshadowing. So I just don't understand the big press, especially since we got it so late. If this isn't impacting or affecting them whatsoever, then it seems to me that we can figure this out as we go along. Is there a reason why, if it's not impacting him, why the city needs to...
It will impact the employees there if they're, if, they want to offer the, the people who are already there jobs, and those people are, they want to know what's going to happen because they know that Lake Patton LLC is no longer going to be operating. So they're very concerned about what's going to happen, and they deserve to know what their wages are going to be.
Well, I appreciate the...
And we also need to put together a budget for the golf course, and this is a key component of that.
I think the information this evening, for me, being one of the ones abstained earlier, well, one of some of the conversations that I also had between now and then, but saying that this, it was almost prefaced a little bit like it was, is this management company that was asking for this, so it was a little bit confusing, so I do appreciate.
And they didn't at all. We're the ones that are asking for it.
So that's where we, I had a lot of confusion as to, well, why, who, who's it going to be on the backs of for the people? It's also very helpful to let us know what people are currently making and that they're at least going to be, sounds like they're going to be matching, if not going up, just because people are going to have to go up, because that was passed in the state. So I, I do appreciate the extra information. I'll, I'll support this, but I do think if staff, Kelly, if there's a chance to talk with Alan and fight... and find out, is this going to be an issue in the near future? Because we're seeing this difference in prevailing wage and what the purpose of that was, that we might need to revisit this conversation so we don't have to confuse people each time we have to maybe do a waiver or something else.
I think that, I think that the idea that we passed the living wage when we did, and that we hadn't anticipated what was going to happen with it, but that we still have an aspiration that we pay good wages in the city of Bellingham, means that we should discuss this. But you were asking also about why, and I think you heard Paul Loufold say, and Leslie say, that as of January 1st, we don't have a contract. So it's not, we can, we, if we chose to subsidize the golf course, we could, but we still need to have something in place for January 1st, and I think that's the, that's the time crunch.
Okay. Any further discussion? So I'm having a bit of a struggle with this, too, because it kind of is coming a little bit fast, but I'm trying to focus on what I think of the real issues. And when this, you know, this construct was come up with several years ago, prevailing wage was quite different, and we hadn't had the changes in the state living wage that we've had. We now have one of the highest required minimum wages across the country, and that's a good thing. And I think the original intent was to do what the prevailing wage rules and what the minimum wage rules are already doing. So I'm thinking this is kind of duplicating those efforts. I'm not 100% sure of that, and I hope I don't regret it, because I think that's how I'm understanding it, and I hope that's true. So I will be supporting the waiver. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the waiver with the finding, and I would say with the finding that both of those things apply to various degrees, both of those two categories of findings apply to various degrees, to approve the waiver, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And, and two abstentions. So five, five and zero, with two abstentions being Terry and Dan abstained. Okay. Thank you very much. I've got too many pieces of paper. We're going to the third item, which I'm pretty sure was a budget presentation by the mayor. I'm going to do this by memory. Do you want to report out on your own budget presentation, then?
I'm not going to go over it again, so the presentation is available online. Just that, we started with our staff reports, so two department heads, Parks and Police, made their budget presentations, they're pretty brief and pretty straightforward. And so we'll continue on, on the 23rd, with the rest of the changes in the budget in the mayor's boardroom, so that you have an opportunity to ask questions. And even for those who don't have any changes, they, people can be available to answer questions for you. So you just need to let me know so I can let them know. They need to be here. And I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so that was actually the fourth item. So the third item was, you presented the overall budget point of view, and people could go back and listen to Kelly's presentation, and then we did indeed hear from the Parks Department, Police Department, and we'll pick up each of the departments in turn at the next few work sessions. We were given little one-page summaries. I've asked our staff to, because these weren't in the packet, we're going to start, you know, publishing these also so the public can look at these summaries that are being provided to us. So both of those items were for information only on the budget. So that concludes that. The next action is minutes for approval. We have one set of meeting minutes from September 25th. Move approval.
Second.
Are there any corrections or changes to the meeting minutes from September 25th? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the council meeting minutes from September 25th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. Next item will be old and new business. Roxanne.
In 2014, I woke up in the morning very suddenly and decided that I wanted to ask our Bellingham City Council if they would be willing to get rid of Columbus Day and replace it with Coast Salish Day. And I had no idea what was going to happen with that idea, how community members would feel, but the night that we voted on it, the most interesting and wonderful mix of people came together to support it, people of different faiths, people of different cultures, different ways of life. That was a really special night for our community, and it was one of the very best days of my life. So I just want to thank the council members, past and current, that are supporting Coast Salish Day. I think the community that came together to support it and the events that happened today that made this, again, a very special day, and I just wanted to wish you all a very happy Coast Salish Day. Haiska siam.
Thank you, Jean.
Yes, this is a monumental announcement here. You know, I am the longest-serving member of the City Council, but I'm certainly not the oldest. And we have one on the far right of me, not on the far left, who's celebrating a birthday today. So we went out and got our picture taken, Terry. You're in the middle with the gray on there, and it says, "Happy Birthday, Terry, from all of us." So let's do our traditional sing, "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Bornerman. Pass that down. Take it out.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Terry. Happy Birthday to you.
See, there's no secrets up here. That's all the old business for me.
That's old business. Anything else under old or new business? Terry?
Yeah, I just wanted to restate, this afternoon, I raised the issue of concern that had been coming up out of the South Hill and Seehome neighborhood, the neighbors that live within the areas of the residential parking zones, the changes that we were notified are happening, not input about them, but that were happening, that they do away with parking stickers today. And the afternoon, I raised my opposition to that, because there, this is one way we know who's parking illegally, and so that we can let people know. And so I just want people to know that that has been, that objection has been raised, and I hope something will be done to address it.
Okay, thank you. Pinky?
This afternoon, I asked for a status on our climate action plan, and the mayor told us that it looks like Natural Resources should be having it to us by the end of this year, and I was just curious if they gave us any date this afternoon or gave us anything, because we said that, this afternoon, we said we should be able to find an update. I don't know if that came back to us.
No, it did not.
Okay.
We will reconvene on that.
We'd like it, the climate action line for Christmas, please.
Thanksgiving action.
Thanksgiving would be even better. Anything else under old and new business? Okay, go on to executive session. I'll report out, we have one item in executive session. It's a litigation matter, Flint versus the City of Bellingham. Where is the report? Staff provided information on a litigation matter. It was for information and discussion only. City Council took no action. Mayor's report.
I have some approvals and for information that I need from you tonight, and, but before I start, I just wanted to, was so impressed with the presentation that Darlene and Ryan gave today to the Justice Committee, and the reason I'm mentioning it is I didn't want to mention it then, because I knew we were short on time, but I think that what they've attempted to do with their team, with the other staff, with the Police Department, with legal, is try to make the best of a difficult situation that actually, in some ways, is better for our inmates. And so I just wanted to make sure I publicly said, even though I didn't say anything this afternoon, that I appreciate what they've been doing. It's very difficult, and they really care about how it turns out for people, and I appreciate that. Two approvals, mayor's reappointment of Tom Weller to the Transportation Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
Terry? We have a motion before us to approve the appointment, a reappointment of Tom Weller to the Transportation Commission. Any discussion?
I would just like to say, I've sat in on some of these meetings, and I met Tom, yeah, of course, during his first term, and he's just been a great member to this committee. You've selected a lot of great members, but really reaching out, trying to understand more, goes out and tries to understand the impacts in the community, and really is trying to understand the issues from a community perspective and not just his own little perspective there. So I'm really glad that he's willing to do the second term.
Well, just to give credit where credit is due, the Transportation Commission and the staff make recommendations to me. That's usually what happens. And then it's very seldom that I would have a question about somebody that got recommended. So you can thank the staff over there.
Okay, all those in favor of reappointing Tom Weller to Transportation Commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Reappointment of Becca Shrew to the Design Review Board.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint Becca Shrew to the Design Review Board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, also appointed.
These two are just for information only. A reappointment of Ann Beck to the Community Development Advisory Board, and the appointment of Chris Roselli and Ann Kemper to the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, consent agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion before us to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Are there no final ordinances for reading? Is there any further visits before the Bellingham City Council? Seeing none, we adjourn. Thank you, everyone.